...meeting of the Emory Unified School District Board of Trustees. At this time, can I have roll call, please? Ms. Tameri?
President Dice?
Present.
Member Mueller-Williams?
Present.
Member Dwin?
Present.
Member Ash?
Present.
Member Pats?
Present.
Awesome. All right, if, um, can I have everyone, please, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Um, and just before we move on, member Kent just reminded me, and I think maybe it would be a great idea, for a moment of silence, we've had now our 74th school shooting since the Sandy Hook tragedy in 2012. So, um, if everyone would mind for a small moment of silence. Thank you, thank you. Um, we'll now move on to item C, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or amendments this evening?
I move approval of the agenda for June 11th.
I'll second.
All right, um, any objections to that? So, we'll move accordingly. Um, at this time, we have item D, public comment. If there's any members of the public that wish to address the board regarding items that are not on this evening's agenda, um, you may do so at this time if you will come to the podium. All right, um, moving on, we do have this evening two public hearings that, um, I will start the first one. Our first public hearing is on the local control accountability plan. Um, I'll just note that, uh, tonight is the first of at least two.
Yes, there, um, President Dice, there will be a, um, public hearing again, uh, on both, um, on both items. I'll cap in the district's budget for next year, tomorrow evening as well.
All right. So, at this time, I'll open the, uh, public hearing and, um, ask if there's any public comment to this specific item. Please do so. Seeing none, we'll now close the public hearing. Um, now on to item F, um, public hearing for the 2014-15, um, budget. Same thing, I'll open, um, the public hearing for, uh, that item, and again, we'll have, um, a second public hearing tomorrow. Any public comments for, um, that public hearing? Um, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for the budget, 2014-15, um, budget.
Yes, uh, President Dice, if I can just make one comment for the record. The agenda item does say, uh, public hearing on the 2014-15 adopted budget, but the fact is, we have not adopted the budget yet. It actually is a tentative budget, so I just want to make sure that the record is corrected to reflect that.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sugiyama. All right. So, we'll now move into reports. Um, item G, do we have any reports, uh, representatives from CSEA this evening? Emory Teachers Association? NEH's PTO? NEH's, uh, School Site Council? Emory Secondary School PTO? Student Representatives Report?
That came fast. Um, so far at Emory, we've had graduation two. Actually, we had, um, on the 9th of June, in the morning, we had NEH's graduation at, uh, BCC, and then around five, six, actually, we had, um, the senior, the class of 2014 seniors, uh, from Emory graduate at the Scottish Rite Center. And then, the last day of school is tomorrow. I just want to make sure I throw that in there. Summer's coming up, we have our sports are doing well, coming to an end. We did have our sports banquet, and it was very nice. It was nice, we had dinner, and then, of course, the coaches gave out the awards for, um, female and male basketball, female softball, female soccer, and track. And those awards were given out by the coaches. I already mentioned the last day of school.
Is the last day of school tomorrow?
Yes.
It is?
Yes, tomorrow.
Okay.
Tomorrow. Oh, it is finals week at Emory Secondary School. And the best part is, tomorrow, we have one final in the morning, and then it's the last day of school.
It's the last day of school.
And we get out around 11 something, which is very exciting. And, um, I want to mention, oh, um, no, I think I covered everything.
Any summer plans for you?
Oh, yeah. Um, our football programs are like up and running right now, so we're practicing out on the field. You mean like a personal update or something?
Yeah, yeah.
I get this boot off on Monday. And that's pretty much it, yeah.
Well, well, thank you for the student reps report. You have been wonderful addition to the board this year.
Thank you.
So, really appreciate it. And, um, you've kept us quite informed, and we look forward to, uh, next year. That's great. Great job. Um, at this time, superintendent's report?
Yes, uh, President Dice, members of the board, a brief report this evening. Uh, first, I wanted to, uh, comment on the fact that, uh, we did have the eighth grade promotion ceremony on Monday. It was held at Berkeley City College Grade Event. Uh, it was, uh, well-attended, and spirits were really positive, and, um, congratulations to eighth graders as they move on to, uh, to high school. Uh, that evening, um, we did have the, uh, graduation ceremonies for the senior class of 2014. I want to, uh, publicate and acknowledge the five valedictorians, uh, in this very distinguished class, and the salutatorian. The valedictorians were Vanessa Acosta, who will be attending UC Berkeley in the fall, Jasmine Carr, who will be attending CSU San Francisco, uh, Aditi Seth, who will be attending UC Berkeley in the fall, uh, Alondra Solis Guzman, who will be attending CSU San Francisco, and Randy Villanueva, who will be attending UC Davis. Um, and the salutatorian was Simran Disabar, and he will be attending Holy Names University. She will be attending Holy Names University. So, um, again, a very distinguished class. It was a wonderful graduation, um, event at a very nice venue, Scottish Rite Temple. And, um, so, um, and Dr. Rubio was able to be there, uh, for both of those events, and so it was, uh, it was really great to see our students, uh, success, and, uh, we wish them well as they move forward, uh, to the next level of, uh, of their lives. Uh, between the eighth grade promotion, uh, ceremony and the high school graduation, uh, board member Dwin, Dr. Rubio, and I had an opportunity to meet with Dr. Debbie Budd, who is the president of Berkeley City College, and her staff, uh, to talk about future partnerships with, uh, Berkeley City College. It was a great meeting. I think there is tremendous potential, and certainly interest on their part, as well as ours, to work with them to, um, in partnership to provide, um, new programs for our students, new services, and, uh, so it was a great initial conversation, and I know, and Dr. Rubio, uh, was able to be there, so, um, I'm sure he will be continuing the work with developing that partnership with BCC, and I think it will provide, uh, incredible benefits to our students, uh, as well. And then lastly, I wanted to just acknowledge, um, in our audience tonight, we have a gentleman named Ryan Trott, who all of you know. He, uh, is our Director of Technology, uh, and, um, he will be leaving us unfortunately, but we are happy for him because he's going to be moving on to bigger and greater challenges. Uh, I have not had the pleasure of working with him, but I've only heard tremendous things about his contributions to the district during his tenure here. So, Ryan, we want to thank you for, uh, your great service to the district and wish you well in your, uh, future endeavors. Uh, and then we have another person who's leaving us, uh, Jack Lathan, as you know, Principal of NEH's will be leaving us at the end of this year, and I'm sure she would have been here to say goodbye to you, but tonight is also her kind of going-away party that is happening as we speak, and, um, but we also want to express our sincere appreciation to Ms. Lathan for her, I think, seven years of service to the district, um, and her leadership at NEH's, and, uh, as we know, NEH's has, during her tenure, uh, the achievement levels at the school have, uh, grown every year, and, um, so, uh, we want to extend our appreciation to Ms. Lathan for her service to the district and wish her well also, um, as she looks at other challenges, uh, in her future. So, I think that ends my report for this evening.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sugiyama. Um, this evening, my board president's report is just to echo, um, the senior class graduation and, um, the fact that, uh, my family was deeply impacted by that graduation, and just really appreciate the district for, um, taking my niece from kindergarten to 12th grade and being a phenomenal student and being part of a phenomenal class. So, I'm just really excited about what she's been able to experience as a student here, um, at Emory Unified School District, um, and as she goes on to her next, um, her next challenge. So, I'm, I'm really excited, and perhaps there'll be other little people in my family to come at some, some point, not right now, but, uh, at some point. Um, and in addition, I did want to extend, because Ryan is sitting right here, um, genuinely, um, I just found out we're like the same age, so we just found that connection, and so, um, in addition, uh, we graduated at the same time, so 93, class of 93, hey! But, um, but really appreciate everything that you've done. I think, um, the district has grown tremendously in terms of technology and our ability to really deliver technology, um, to our classrooms, to the hands of staff, um, has been tremendous in your short time with us. Um, but we definitely have, uh, learned so much from the passion in which you bring, um, and brought to the board and convinced us, in, in the right way, that we need to move on certain things, and I, I'm really glad and grateful that you were leading that charge and, um, forced us to, not forced us, but, you know, encouraged us to make the right choices at the right time. And I think, um, because we were in a position to do it, it made it that much more easy for us. So, really appreciate everything you've done and look forward to continuing our partnership as a friend to the district, but even more so, um, you know, you're not that far. We'll, we'll find you. We know how to call people, we have technology. We'll text you, there's selfies and all that stuff, so, but really appreciate everything you've done, so I just wanted to extend that. You have it, you have it. All right, so, um, with that, we'll move on to, uh, the consent calendar, and, um, first, I'd like to ask any board members if there's anything, um, they wish to pull from, uh, consent calendar for, for additional discussion. I know we have... We do have the Personnel Action, do you want to pull that? We'll pull that. The, um, item, I'm going to find it. We'll pull item two. Anything else, board members? All right, um, so if we can probably go ahead with Personnel Actions, um, document, I did notice we have a hire. And Ms. Harrell, thank you. Oh, the mic's not on.
The mic's on.
She like repeats.
And we did, yes, we need him as a technology director. Okay. Shortly, I'm asking you to approve the Personnel Actions, one of our new hires, Ms. Regina Chigoya, but I would like to take a brief moment to introduce her to you. She taught science in the Bay Area for the last five years, during which time she was a science instructor with the Lawrence Hall of Science, working with the East Bay Academy for Young Scientists Program. Um, Dr., she comes highly recommended by Dr. Valf, as well as the staff from the Lawrence Hall of Science, and Ms. Chigoya, could you just please come forward and greet everyone?
Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm Regina Chigoya. I'm 5'1", so I'm on my toes right now, so please don't laugh, thank you. Uh, no, I look forward to working with, um, Emory Unified School District, and I've been a neighbor, I was in Berkeley for a number of years, and also working with Carol really closely, and, and kind of having the same vision with her and kind of moving forward with the, uh, STEM education and, um, science lab, so, thank you.
Well, welcome. Thank you so much for being here this evening. Really appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Harrell. We look forward to, um, uh, all the new hires coming in front of us. Thank you, appreciate that, thank you. Um, with that introduction, uh, any questions from board members on any of the other items, even though I already asked you that?
No, I'll move to, um, accept the consent calendar.
All right.
A second.
Approve, and, uh, we have a motion and a second. Do we have, um, any objections to that? And, um, we'll take a, a roll call vote for those, if we will, please, Ms. Tameri?
Member Pats?
Aye.
Member Ash?
Aye.
President Dice?
Aye.
Member Dwin?
Aye.
Member Williams-Mueller?
Hello.
Thank you, thank you, and again, welcome to the school district, really appreciate it. And now, we'll move on to Discussion/Action Items. Item one, Youth Together Student Engagement.
Yes, uh, President Dice, members of the board, it's a pleasure to introduce this item to you, uh, although I will pass this to, um, our distinguished guests who are here this evening. Um, as the board is well aware, when the ECCL, uh, was developing as a vision, one of the major components of the vision was to really ensure that all stakeholder groups had input into the process, and, uh, one of the most important stakeholder groups was to hear student voice. And, uh, so, we, we have been blessed with having, um, our, our students become actively engaged in, um, the ECCL vision, and, uh, so this evening, it's a pleasure to introduce to you Cory Wexler, who, um, is the ECCL Student Engagement Consultant, uh, who has been working with the students, and she will, um, introduce and present this item.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me? I haven't had a voice in the last six months, so, I'm glad to have the mic. Tell me if you need me to be louder, and I'll try. So, I've been with you for the last three years, supporting the Emeryville Center of Community Life Student Engagement Efforts. It's been quite a ride. Um, I've spent the last three years looking for and seizing upon opportunities to increase student voice and decision-making, both about the future ECCL site and about other students' current, um, educational experiences. As my contracted time comes to close, I really want to take this opportunity to summarize these efforts over the last three years and to be part of a conversation about moving forward and how to keep these efforts alive. Um, I'm in the company of several middle school students and high school students this evening, who are really excited to share their work with you, and so what I'm going to do is just give you a brief overview of the last three years. I'll keep it really short, and then they'll come up and they'll share their own work. And what we're going to talk about this, this evening is really what's been going on now and what's moving, so we can start to think about how to keep it going. So, to summarize this work, um, I was brought in in June of 2012, and the primary focus of that time was to think about the transition of the ESS into interim facilities and programs. I coordinated and facilitated focus groups for the sixth through 11th graders. Um, the ECCL staff and school principals wanted to make sure all these students had accurate information about what was happening, and also had a voice in what was happening, um, and had an, an opportunity to really express their feelings about it. The high school students were further asked to contribute ideas to the creation of the interim high school, and a bunch of them participated in the summer, um, preparation for the new space. For the middle school students, they were also invited to take part in a gallery walk of design images and really give feedback to the, um, schematic design of the ECCL space. And as a side note, as we were doing garden design work this year, one of the students said, "Oh, wouldn't it be really cool if we had those moss chairs?" And that was totally in, like, pulling out of his brain from years ago, when we looked at these designs, he remembered it and was really excited about it. So, that was a nice connect of different efforts. So, year two had two different areas of emphasis. The first one was to increase students' critical thinking about the educational system and develop a range of skills that directly supported their ability to contribute to the three strands of ECCL work, so around relationship development, supports development, and capital project. The second emphasis area was to deepen relationships between students and elected officials, as you know, and to really, um, deepen their understanding of the different governing bodies so they could participate more. And one of the kind of lovely successes of year two was that we had the student elected official convening, in which there's a really wonderful day of dialogue between folks. Um, that summer, about a dozen eighth through 11th graders also participated in the Health and Wellness Center, um, Health and Wellness Summer Intensive, that first introduced the idea of starting up a student advisory board. So, this last year, year three, built directly upon these last, the other two years, with really an eye towards institutionalizing these student leadership systems. And so, Youth Together, who worked with us a bit in the second year doing leadership trainings, was contracted to be at the, at ESS full-time and really have a presence and help with organizing efforts there. We rolled out the Health and Wellness Center Youth Advisory Board, and also began the NEH's Learning Garden Design Project. And also, were part of really thinking about and helping to bring on a student onto the COC again. So, before I have folks come up to talk about these three areas, the Youth Together work, the Learning Garden Design, um, project, and also the Health and Wellness Youth Advisory Board, I really want to bring your attention to the fact that while there have been numerous staff and teachers, including Anna Kreta Allen, Will Chavren, Brenda Collins, Jack Lathan, Ms. Turner, Mr. Rogers, Juliet Dunn, Lynn Perkins, Lauren LaPlante, Ashley McHughes, Tom Roche, um, Mark Cyberlich, so many people have been involved. Um, the other truth is that there's no adult point person lined up, as far as I'm aware, um, to continue these efforts next year. And there's not presently a contract for Youth Together to be in Emeryville again, and, um, to continue the work that Celeste has done. I know there's conversations about that, and I'll get to that later, but there's not a contract right now. And so, as you listen to these end-of-the-year reports, I really want you to keep asking yourself, um, what will it take to continue this work? Who needs to be at the table to make decisions about the future of this work? And in what direction do we even want this work to go as you get closer and closer to the new site? So, having said that, I want to first invite, I'm going to have the young folks go first. Um, I want to invite up the NEH students to talk about the garden, if you'll come up. All right. So, one of the really exciting collaborative projects this year has been the NEH's Learning Garden Design Project. So, just to refresh your memories, in the new CCL design, there's a designated space for a learning garden. This space sits between the K8 building and the field, in that little triangular corner. And here's a close-up of that space. You can see the stairs that go up to the main building right there. So, students have been meeting since February of this year with myself, Ms. Turner, and Mr. Rogers. They've been working with the school gardener and the garden to deepen their relationship to gardening, as well as increase their gardening skills. Mark Cyberlich has generously spent many afternoons with us, introducing aspects of design and construction, and taking students through the design process. The students are full of creative, thoughtful ideas, fully holding the potential of this learning garden, and fully committed to seeing this project through to the end. Um, they're here to share tonight their work with you. I will say, one of the awesome things about this group is it's really hard to rein them in. Even five minutes ago, I was saying to Daniel, "Stick to the speech, because they're full of ideas." Every week, they're like, "What about this idea? And we could do this with the garden." So, it's really, really exciting. Somebody on the floor, over to you.
Hi, my name is Daniel. I am a sixth grader at NEH's. I'm here to talk about our garden and our ideas for the new learning garden. This is Strickland, Chad, and Alex. We are part of the Garden Club, also otherwise known as the Guardians of the Garden. We want you to know that we worked really hard on the designs of the garden, and we want you to take our ideas seriously. Next year, we want a program with the architect, contractor, and Cory, so we can help design the garden. We would visit other schools to get more ideas about garden designs, continue to work on the garden designs with the architect and contractor and Cory, share these designs with other students to get their ideas, and we, that we want to continue gardening at NEH's with Ms. Leslie.
We are designing a learning garden where kids and adults can relax and learn. Some things we have been thinking about are a space for insects, the seating area, and how it can be used as a learning space, ways to attract and learning, and learn about birds, the ra, the raised planter beds, and how we want them to look like. Trees and, um, the trees and the compost areas.
So, I wanted to share with you, one of the, one of the, one aspect of the work this year has to been, has been to study the different physical components of a garden and identify what has to be in a garden, so it can really run as a garden. And so, students have looked at a ton of images and have gone to several gardens and started to identify, "Oh, this is what feels good to us," or "This is what's exciting to us." So, talking about raised beds, and talking about what the materials are, what the shapes would be, how we could build up, since it's a fairly small space, and really maximize airspace, how to create a really lovely seating area that really draws people into that space and could be learned, used as a learning area, place to gather, and also having comfortable seating, formal seating. And again, like they mentioned, figuring out how does compost live there, so it can be part of it. Another aspect, which we've been doing a lot of in the last couple of weeks, is really looking at and exploring design, and how do you lay out a space? And the students and I have had so much fun learning from our, how you can just kind of free up your brain and move pieces around and create really, really different spaces. So, those big round areas could be big shaded tree areas and the planter boxes and seating, and you just get a sense of their brains going and imagining the layouts of these spaces. So, this is where they are in the process, right? They've visited spaces, we've talked about the different aspects of a garden, and they are just trying to explore la, the layout of this garden, so they could even have a proposal to come to the board with.
Do you guys have any questions?
No, not right now. I'm fine.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, that's it.
I know, we, you know what? We may have questions, and we, we set you up by letting you sit down, so why don't you come back up real quick and, uh... That, we got to, we let you get away too quick.
They have a lot to share about it, so definitely fire away.
Well, I'm, I'm just curious about how much time do you guys spend on, um, have you spent on design, on some of the physical spaces? What's your typical time that you spend each day or during the week doing the work that you've been doing so far?
An hour and 15 minutes each a day.
Really? So, you guys are very committed. So you guys are very committed. Each week?
Yeah, each week, I.
But I'm sure you're thinking about it every hour of each day, so.
Oh, oh, we actually have it on Mondays and Wednesday.
Okay, okay.
Some days we, we plan out the architect. We art, yeah, the archi- architect. Um, we measured, we, like, we went outside, we measured how long the, how long the garden will be. And we, um, we talked about the raised beds and the compost area. And, and then we had, and we talked about aquabots. Aquap, ooh, sorry, aquaponics.
So what is that? Because it sounds like a transformer, so what, what's, what's aquaponics?
Aquaponics is when you have fish in a garden space and then, basically the fish droppings, they fertilize the plants.
Hey, so a little ecosystem.
Yeah.
Hey, oh, nice, okay.
So first, very well done. I could not imagine at your age getting up and speaking in a mic to a bunch of people. I'm still nervous, speaking in a mic now. But I would like to know if any of you have used what you've learned and taken it home to maybe some garden space that you might have at home or even if it's just a pot, or talked to your parents about doing a raised bed?
Well, really, uh, what I've been doing at home is taking some of the, um, garden, um, ideas and putting them in the own, my own house. Like, we would put, we wouldn't put raised beds, but we put beds on the ground. And they were in viney, that, viney stuff that would go up and cover. And, yeah, that's it. Oh, and. In the garden, we want to have, um, insects and stuff that, so we can study about them and how I always, I always have butterflies, um, raised from when they're day one, since when there were eggs. So I want to have opportunity to do that in the new garden.
So I want to echo member Ash's comments. You did a very good job in your presentation. I have two questions, though. So it's my understanding that, you know, you all have been working with the architects in some of this, you know, endeavors as well, correct, some of your efforts? So tell me this, how has it helped working with adults? And how have it benefited you all working with adults? And how, and what have you got out of that? If anything?
Like, if we worked for ourselves, we wouldn't have gone very, well, we have gone far, but not as far as we could have gone with the adults. Because like, they helped us, like, um, plan out more complex stuff. Like, we did, like, simple stuff and, like, they brought up, like, we brought up aquaponics, but then they brought up, like, ramadas and good seeding areas. So like, without, like, they, like, they helped us, like.
Okay.
It's like, like, example, like, if we're food, like, without them, we wouldn't be the whole set.
Right, right.
Like, we need them, to be part of the set.
So what I'm hearing, that your experience working with adults was a positive experience?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Second question. How has it been with you all working together as a team? And how has that, um, helped you in your experience working with the garden?
Well, to me, I like working with people, so this is, like, really not, like, it's fun and, like, like, people say there's no I in team, so like, this is fun working with them.
Okay, great. And, and you guys, and it, it appears that you all have been able to, um, have a greater work working together versus working alone?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, if we never had a, like, a team, like, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have went as far. Because some people had ideas and some people, like, some people had different ideas. So we wouldn't have more than one idea. We would have, like, a little ideas. Yeah, we wouldn't be complete.
Right, okay, all right.
Well, like, without the adults, we, it wouldn't, it would have hel, it wouldn't have helped us as much. We would have, like, done a bunch of crazy stuff, like, that we couldn't do. Like, we wouldn't have thought of all the permits we would have to do for, like, the ramada.
That's right.
And, like, the budget, we wouldn't have known the budget either.
Right.
That word, budget, okay.
One more question. So the, there is, you can study horticultural or landscape architecture in college. Do any of you have an interest to pursue this as maybe a career or a deeper level of study?
Well, um, in, when I grow up, I wanted to start, like, um, a daycare. And like, in the daycare, I wanted to have, like, mini programs about gardening, where they learn about insects and, like, like, um, I would take, like, small yogurt cups, wash them out and, like, poke holes, put rocks, and then teach them about, like, mini, um, raised beds and, like, how to, um, what they, um, pick their own plants and stuff. I would start that, yeah.
So I got one more question. So, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. No, go ahead and answer.
Well, I am actually interested in, um, doing architect design because I like designing things. Like, the garden, I had fun designing the garden with, um, Ms. Cory and the architect. I thought that was very fun and I want to continue doing it.
Great. So Mike, and you kind of, you, you, you kind of segued into my question. So as, you, you all are in the sixth grade, correct?
Yes.
So tell me this, how do you feel about Youth Together as an organization coming in? Oh, wrong group, you're not Youth Together? Okay.
That's Cory's team.
How you feel about Ms. Cory and the work that she's done with you all? And do you feel that, and do you feel that we ought to, you know, keep her and continue some of the activities that you all have been learning?
Well, um, I've been start, like, um, I was talking about, like, during the summer, if we had a program with Cory.
There you go.
Um, about gardening, like, I'm helping design more. And like, um, like Cory, she's really fun with us. She brings us snacks, like, she's like, we need, we need brain food, we need brain food.
Right.
Like, she just helps, she helps us a lot. She brings, like, supplies we need and everything. She's like our mom, a stepmom, a second mom.
So I do have, and we, one more, oh, you have something to add? To the microphone, you good?
You talked about some of the trips you went. Oakland is really a center for aquaponics. There's a gentleman who's doing some really great work, and I'm drawing a blank on his name and it's killing me. But he's really looking at famine relief throughout the world. Were you guys able to go visit his, no? Okay, I'm just. You went to Berkeley? And do they have an aqua pod set up? Aquaponics, yeah, no hydroponics. Yeah, he's doing really, uh, he's an engineer and he's, uh, from Africa and just doing some really amazing work with building these self-contained units.
I have a question for you guys. So what is the system of aquaponics? Like, I know you guys said it's fish droppings and it helps fertilize, but why and how?
Well, the person that actually suggested aquaponics is not here right now. Um, she kind of went away from the group, yeah. So I just know how it works, I don't know the system.
Okay, can you tell me how it works then?
I saw a video and, like, like, the fish are in the pond. And like, um, when the, um, when the fish poop, it's the fertilizer for the plants. And then the, the plants grow and they produce, um, fresh water for the fish to live. So like, um, they both get a win-win. Like, the fish get to live and then, like, the plants get to grow. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I, you know, I, I, I'm just, I'm moved. I, I will say that I was a student in the district many moons ago and, um, I had an opportunity to work with architects, um, which was a different program. There was no building of the ECL or anything like that. But I was in high school and I see the value in taking that to such a lower grade. It makes a whole lot of sense. You, you guys have brought so much energy to, um, uh, such a profession that I don't know that you knew all this before, right? You're like, no. So I mean, it, I'm sure it's made a huge impact, just as you said. So it's really remarkable how you've been able to present it and what you've learned and the excitement you obviously have to come a day before school is out, to express that. So, you know, well done and well, well, well guided, um, really amazing job.
And I, and I just want to say, keep doing the work that you're doing as far as working together as a team, work, um, doing community engagement, um, public speaking, working with adults, because it can do nothing but help you as you grow older. So you guys had a great start and you're doing a great job. Good job tonight.
Thank you.
I wish I was in the sixth grade. Invite Celeste up. And she's going to, um, speak both about, she's going to do a summary of the Youth Together work of this year and also of this smaller project that she and I have been, you need this moved totally. She's also going to speak, um, about this, this smaller project, the Health and Wellness Center Youth Advisory Board that we started earlier this year and have been coordinating and facilitating together.
Hi, everybody. I've been up here a lot this year, but I'm still nervous each time. So Youth Together, um, we work in five school district, five, at five school sites in three districts. We work at Skyline, Fremont, and Castlemont in Oakland. We're in Richmond, and at Richmond High School. And now we're also at Emory, um, Secondary School. So we joined up with Emory, um, about a year and a half ago and we did some work around the ECL. And then we had the opportunity to have a larger contracting to come in and run our full, our full organizing program. And I joined, um, Emory as a Youth Together organizer. In that time, it's been a whirlwind. We've got a lot done. In a little bit of time, I was going over all of our accomplishments with our young people today and they saw their names on the website and they were like, we did that? And I'm like, yeah, we did that. Like, they, they've learned a lot of organizing skills. And so I'll just go through the story of how that was able to happen. The first part is the leadership class. Um, every, basically every day except Tuesday, um, I facilitate, um, the ASB.
And Wednesday.
And Wednesday, I facilitate the ASB class. Um, Bree is in my class. Um, and in leadership, we cover everything from public speaking, power and oppression, cycles of violence, how to do basic community organizing. We talked a lot about ethnic studies.
Are you supposed to begin the presentation?
Mm-mm.
Okay, okay.
We spoke a lot about ethnic studies, um, because we believe that development of self makes a better leader for the school. And we took a, a good portion of our students to our annual, um, Ethnic Studies Conference at UC Berkeley, which we host for a series of, for high schools all around the Bay. We did media literacy, we watched a lot of movies, and then, and then, um, we deconstructed them to talk about, like, what, what are the stereotypes? What are the themes? How does this affect your psyche? How does violence play out? And then how do we take that and, uh, bring that back to our school environment? How, how do we walk around with that in our communities, right? So we talk, we talked a lot about trauma. We talked about relationships and boys and girls a lot. We did some post-high school planning, so career, job readiness, how to do resumes. We learned how to, how to organize really strong fundraisers. We did some conflict resolution, which sometimes was resolving a conflict in the middle of class. And then, most importantly, we, they learned about the, how the school district runs. So what's the structure of the school district? How, who make, who are the decision makers? How, how do you read a budget for a school? What committees, what committees decide what? And the reason why we did that is because on the first, during the first week of school, we spent a lot of time, the first month actually, just doing analysis. We did a lot of power analysis and analysis around, like, what their needs were. And I wanted to move them from a space of this is what we need to, this is what we're about to get. This is, this is what we're about to ask for. And, and we are empowered enough to not only just complain about it, but be a part of creating a solution. And so one prime example is Simran, um, who is a salutatorian, and she was in my class. And she didn't have a class after my class. And she would be there, she would stay after my class every time and debate me that they didn't have the power to change anything. This is the first three months of school. We would talk about sexism. You can't change sexism. We'd talk about anything in the whole wide world. She was a no, and it wasn't possible. And then, um, towards, after we, we worked with Ms. Dunn and won some changes in the school lunch, her perspective began to change. And the last, the second to last week of school, she comes in my room and she goes, "Ms. Celeste." "Yeah, um, you know, it's not fair that, that people who can't go on the senior trip don't have anything else to do." "Well, Simran, what do you think should happen?" "I think there should be, um, something just for people whose parents are strict. All inclusive for everyone to attend." And so I said, "Well, where would you want to go?" And we researched some places. And I said, "Well, why don't you sit down with Shav?" And she said, "Well, you, I might not be the good person." I said, "Well, identify someone and go and, and request it." And she never spoke to me about it, but three days later, they were going on this extra trip. And so it was, it was a testament that she felt empowered to have a say in her school or, or Sam, who is in the meeting, um, who, we were all in the meeting. And she's like, "I don't understand this new soap. I think they put hand sanitizer by accident." And Shav walked by and she goes, "Hey, we need soap." You know, but that, she felt empowered enough. And Shav, you know, was like, "Hey, how you doing first?" And they had a conversation and he got right on it. And she felt empowered and heard, like she had power, um, in making the decision. And those are just some of the stories that came out of leadership class. And sometimes in leadership class, we would just sit and talk because young people deal with trauma all the time in their lives and just need a space to just freely and openly express themselves. And I made sure that that classroom was open to that. The other thing that we did was, um, we ran a student organizing program. So we hired seven young people at $200 a month. And they had to do at least 20 hours. But most of the time they did, Bree is one of them, most of the time they did about 40 hours a week, a month, rather. And in that 40 hours, they took on the responsibility to change their school culture and to, and to make sure that students were engaged at every level. So our core group was about. So, our core group was about 35 people, including our leadership class. We supported the L S Os academically and you see them all of the time. And supporting the, the L S Os academically looked like opening the office on a Saturday and a Sunday so they can come and study, um, getting tutors, um, things like that. And I think five out of the seven actually raised their grades. And Corinne, who had, um, a very low average, is now on the honor roll. Um, we, the biggest thing that we did this year was around the L cap and making sure that young people, that young, young people at Emory were engaged, fully engaged and fully understood the L cap process. And why that was important is because it was a new complicated process that most adults didn't understand. So, the question we were faced with was, well, how do we take this big concept and how do we break it down for ourselves? How do we break it down for the young people? And then, how do young people teach each other about it and get enough information to have input? Our young people facilitated five L cap workshops, one per grade, and then they did an extra one. And then, they took the data, they learned how to, how to, um, what is the word? They learned, they learned how to collect data, um, and then they created a report from it. And then, from that report, they presented it to you guys, they presented it back to the, the staff and to the administration. And I've been working really closely with Ms. Allen around making sure that they, what they, and they surveyed the students. So, what the students wanted was in the L cap. And they also formed the L cap, um, Student Advisory Board. Um, and what's really powerful about our work around the L cap is that we've been fighting on a state level to have youth engagement and the state has not heard us. And districts all around California have been fighting for youth engagement. Small groups have been fighting their districts for youth engagement and they haven't been heard. And Emory is one of the only districts that has created a successful model for student engagement around the L cap. And I've been on conference calls talking, talking about Emory. I was flown to L.A. to talk about the work that Emory is doing. And so, we have some really remarkable students who have, who have taken on this task and as far, um, has exceeded expectations. The last thing is, we, we made a little dent in the Emory's, um, school climate. And the way that we did that was, we did Unity Day, which we talk about, which we talked about here, and we did Unity Week, which is, which was a week of activities. And this year, um, Unity Week was, the focus was, um, Ethnic Studies. And every day, we celebrated a different, different ethnicities at the school. And I think my favorite day was the last day. We had, um, we had basketball games and we had like this international soccer game happening. And then, we had like, um, some South Asian students DJing their hip-hop, South Asian music blend. And then, we were passing out, um, orchata.
Orchata, piñatas.
Piñatas. And so, was all this multiculturalism happening really naturally. And I think that is one of the beautiful things about Emory and one of the things that we were able to celebrate and people really appreciated each other. I liked seeing Eddie trying to learn the dance, the Punjabi dance, you know? And, and seeing Isaac trying to figure out how to pass a soccer ball around, um, around in a circle and now he plays with them at lunch. So, just little things like that are powerful. And then, we've done things, we are always at board meetings, speaking up, we've worked on school lunch and a whole plethora of other things. You see us all the time, so I won't get into all the details. But it's been an absolute pleasure being in this school district and, um, coming here with welcome, welcoming arms, 'cause like I said, we are in many, many school districts and, well, two other school districts and it's just not as easy. And people say they want student engagement, but haven't put that into practice. And though Emory is figuring out what student engagement looks like, but the willingness to partner with us to create it has, has been really remarkable and has really, um, changed the climate of Emory High School.
Thank you. Go for it.
I was just gonna ask, do you want to speak to this or do you want us to talk about another aspect of student engagement first?
Talk to, you gotta talk into the mic.
I was just asking if you want to ask questions or make comments about this before Celeste talks about the Health and Wellness Center component, or should she keep going?
Oh, maybe we can just, um, do questions real quick on what you've covered now.
Okay.
Just look, just to check, just first to sweep. But I wanted to, um, just appreciate the hard work Youth Together has, um, provided in terms of services and support for our students. I think it is, um, amazing, you know, the gains in such a short span of time, for certain, um, to see that students feel empowered to speak up and, um, not stand back, which is normally, you know, um, what's expected of young people. And I think, um, uh, your point is well taken. I think we are still, as a district, you know, open to so much, you know, engagement, especially from our students and trying to figure it out at the same time, that I think even having the sweep of opportunities and, um, what we've been able to witness has been really valuable, um, as I sit here, you know, um, as a former student, I always raise that, 'cause I was a kid here. But I think that's what's really important is that, um, uh, that you feel strongly about what it is and, or passionate about what it is that you have concerns about and finding ways to work through it to find a solution. So, those are really great examples that you mentioned, the students that have, um, been able to, uh, feel that they could, you know, move the agenda forward. So, that's really great. Any questions from board members on this piece?
Yes. What are the names of your students who worked on your Unity Week and Unity Day? I think we should acknowledge them, even though they come up all the, wait, am I on?
Yeah.
Okay. Even though we come up all the time, I think we should get acknowledged after that beautiful speech you just made about us.
Okay, so the first, first person is Bria Williams-Moeller, who is an absolute delight and, one of them, her, her ability to just connect with people of all grades in different cliques at school, she, you're already amazing and I really look forward to seeing like, where you're going post-high school. Like, it's just, it's gonna be great. Um, so, um, Samara Alcut, who just graduated. Ugh, um, um, Samara, Tamara Dancy, Aliyah Hardeman, Justice Perkins, um, Bianca O., Aliyah Muhammad, Angel. I'm just gonna name the core member, the L S Os, is that okay, Bria?
Mm-hmm, no problem.
Okay. And, and Corinne. And Corinne Titus.
Christian has a question.
So, um, I think what you presented was really great and I'm coming late to the party. So, I, I, I would like to know more about some of the things you talked about and I'm just wondering, will there be a formal report of any kind, other than just what you did today or like, is there gonna be something in writing? And if so, what kind of data have you done? Are you looking at the school climate surveys? Or did you do some pre or post-assessment with the kids? You know, I think that's, those are the sort of things that I really like to get, sink my teeth into.
So, we didn't do a pre-survey, but we just finished a school-wide, um, post-survey that we do every year at each school site. Um, and I don't think that that data will be ready until August. Um, and I can create a report. It hasn't been requested of me, but I, I've, I contributed to a report that Corey, um, put together, but we can create a report just for Youth Together and crunch that data earlier than, um, if necessary.
I'd like to see it, I-
Okay.
Thank you.
Real quickly, you know, I just want to, um, say that, you know, I've really appreciated all the work that Youth Together has done with our students at the high school, um, especially around the empowerment, you know, in leadership, um, the empowerment of public speaking and that critical thinking, you know, part regarding the work that they do. And, you know, I know from, uh, my perspective, um, you're giving all, Youth Together is enabling our students to have all the elements that really Common Core is, you know, is really, um, um, wants to instill in, in our students, especially around the public speaking, the leadership, the, you know, community engagement, you know, in, in those areas. So, um, I, I really want to commend Youth Together because I've, I've seen the growth in our students and the confidence, you know, when they, when they come and speak to the podium or, you know, when they're interacting with adults, I, you know, I can see that confidence now. And I think, you know, both, you know, Youth Together and, and Corey, you know, yourself have really instilled, um, confidence in our students to be able to do the things that you all have them doing. So, I just want to commend you on a, you know, a good job that the organization has done for the benefit of student learning and student achievement.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, um, the last thing before I go to speak about the Health and Wellness is, um, tomorrow we will actually, so the young people couldn't come today, 'cause it's finals week, um, but tomorrow, we will be in front of you again, um, to present, um, um, a policy around L cap student engagement, so that the work that we did this year can be, um, institutionalized and can happen next year, not based on what personality is leading it or personality supported, but that we can have good L cap engagement every year. And so, you'll hear from them tomorrow. There will also be a press conference on the steps, because I don't know if a lot of press are going to be there, but we just want to celebrate that Emory has done something that no other school district in the state of California, um, has done, which is, um, really solid student engagement and, and possibly pass a policy around it. And just want to encourage you, if you can be there, it's at 5:30 on those steps tomorrow. Okay, um, moving on to the Health and Wellness, and this will be a little bit quicker. So, Corey and I took on the task of, um, of creating a Wellness Youth Advisory Board so that young, so that the middle school students at Anna Yates and the high school students could envision what does a wellness center look like? How do they envision a wellness center? What does it mean to have a space that holistically supports them as a student? And so, we've been working with eight to 10 youth, it fluctuates a little bit, um, to, and for the past four to five months, they've been researching models of wellness centers around the Bay, um, and really doing some visioning work on, on what they want to see on their campus. And then, um, they even met with the wellness center at, at Emory Secondary and the middle schools were blown away, 'cause they were like, "This exists? This is amazing." So, just getting them familiar with the services that exist already. And so, because a lot of folks, um, because the middle schoolers don't really have a relationship with wellness yet, a lot of what we've been doing so far is just orientating them to the concept of wellness and, and holistic health. Um, we've looked at models, um, at RISE, we've looked at, um, models on the internet of lifelong centers, um, and, and they actually are drawing out what they want to see a wellness center to look like. What's, what's interesting is that, um, they're thinking big and the wellness center is going to be very small. And they're thinking about things like a meditation room, maybe, um, a boxing bag when they're upset, um, like, can they have a dance? Can they have dances? Is there like a place where they can just sit and lay down when they're tired? Like, these are the things that they're thinking of, right? Like, really creating a healthy school climate. And if you look at private schools, um, with the top private schools, they all have this, right? This idea of like, because you spend most of your time at school, so the idea of, of school being a second home and how to create that space. And so, they're working on that. We're also going to have a summer intensive for a week where we're gonna be visiting, um, wellness centers, um, and they're gonna be visiting wellness centers, they'll create a report on what they've learned, what they want to see. And then, they will also develop a survey so that when the school year starts next year, they'll be ready to, um, survey the student body on their ideas and then be able to present it back to Wellness and the E C C L to see what they want to, to see what is actually possible. And they're already challenging the wellness center to think out the box a little bit. And so, it's, it's, uh, it's so far so good. And again, those are seventh and eighth graders and, and then ninth, 10th and 11th graders. And the other cool dynamic about the, um, the Wellness Youth Advisory Board is that I've seen, it's an opportunity for the high school students to step up into leadership in a different way. They feel very like, "Okay, middle schoolers, we're gonna help you along the way and we're gonna help develop your leadership." And, and it's a time for them to put all of the things that they're learning into action and they really appreciate that space. So, that is a little bit about the wellness center and the work that we're doing. Again, um, as Corey said before, there is not a dedicated fund for this work to continue or a purse, or a point person for that work to continue or Youth Together's work to continue. But hopefully, we can all figure that out.
Hi, I'm Lauren LaPlante, the school psychologist, and we've been partnering, um, with Celeste and Corey on the Youth Advisory Board. And as someone who's been working on the school-based health center project for the last seven years, um, I can really speak to the importance of this work and how we've been with all of our collaborators, with California School Health Alliance and UCSF. The importance of this youth engagement piece is something that we have, has been drilled into us, but we haven't had the capacity to do it until now. And what we've been able to do with this new, um, relationship has been really amazing already. And it's, you know, it's a different thing for adults to be sitting in a room making all the decisions than to bring the youth in in a meaningful way. And so, I, when you said that we've been challenged, that's true. Um, and we've learned a lot about how we can do this work and how we can really have our school-based health center be successful, because if the youth are not meaningfully involved throughout the entire process, they're not gonna use it. And they are our key people, um, that we're trying to serve. And so, we need to figure out how they can be meaningfully involved. And it really takes both kind of the on-the-ground legwork that, um, Corey and Celeste have been able to do and the integration with the district. And we've learned some tough lessons about, you know, trying to plan field trips and contractors can't drive vans and, you know, all of these things where like, if we didn't have these relationships that we've built, um, we would not be able to, um, move forward. And so, I also wanted to speak a little bit to data, 'cause I've been, um, coordinating the California Healthy Kids Survey for the last six years. And we've consistently had very low, um, student engagement and opportunities for leadership in this district. And I really expect that with this work, that, um, as we continue on a two-year administration cycle, that we will see changes. But compared to surrounding districts, that's always been an area that we've been really low in. And we also do track school climate, um, data as well through the CHIC survey. Um, but I just really think it's important that we both continue this work and like, seeing how much, uh, is involved in it, like upfront is a lot of work. And then, the integration piece where, um, the sites are really supporting it, because there's some things that as, you know, outside contractors are really hard to get done, whereas like, having relationships with teachers, with site staff, we can really make a lot of things happen, um, together. So, I just really want to speak that this work needs to continue. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for either of us about the Youth Advisory Board?
I was gonna, I was just gonna say, well, you go. Go for it.
How many youth are on your Youth Advisory Board?
Eight to 10.
She like, hmm, something else I can get on. She like, no. She's like, no, no. Think she's stretched already, huh? She's at capacity, I understand. But I just had a question in terms of, from what Ms. LaPlante just mentioned, it seems like it's been more about trying to find a way in and build those connections in order to kind of effectively do what you've done over the last however many months or a few years. Is that, I mean, is that basically how things have been kind of organically growing or since not having necessarily a point person specifically?
So, I'd say it was intentionally organic, meaning that building relationships with people is organic, but I was very intentional like my first three to four months to get to know everyone in the district that I could to build relationships with teachers, which meant, you know, doing, doing classroom workshops for teachers. I didn't mention that, but we did over 35 workshops out in classrooms this year, right? And, and just being on different committees and always just being a helping hand to other, to administration as needed has been a big part of navigating in, when there's a lack of structure. So, really relying on relationships is helpful.
And in terms of the health and wellness, Youth Advisory, in terms of recommendations, you said already, there, there have been ways that you've gained information and you have like a routine, you have the relationship to kind of routinely provide that input to those who are crafting, right? Okay. Okay.
She has monthly, she has weekly meetings with Ms. Dunn.
Okay, okay.
Although, I would say that the next level of, one of the next levels of this work is figuring out how the adult decision-makers and the students are coming together regularly. My, one of my fears is if we're able to keep going with the Youth Advisory Board, that they're going to be meeting over here, totally fired up with a lot of ideas and recommendations, and then the adults are going to be meeting in the middle of the day making decisions and it's a miss. And so, one of the things that is going to be such a beautiful thing to figure out is how do we bring those bodies together? So, it really is a partnership and not just given recommendations, but ongoing dialogue so adults and students can push each other on their ideas and come to something together.
That's a great point. And in terms of, and now I'm going back to your, your first one, in terms of working with the architects, how, how have, I know you've been here long enough to know so many, you know, you've had the history. So, how much has that been the, you know, the connections that you've been able to make and bring, you know, for them to commit to that is really powerful?
Yeah, I mean, I would say with architects, with the teachers, with other staff, my experience is that people are really passionate about the ECL. They're totally done in and are, you know, stretched to capacity, but they're really passionate and so people, where they can be generous with their time, they are. So, Mark has been so generous and Ms. Turner's so generous, like being there, you know, once or twice a week with us to do it. And so, yeah, some of that's relationship building, but also it's not, on one level, it's not a hard sell because people are passionate. On the other hand, it is a bit of a hard sell because there's also this feeling of, well, if we do all this work with the kids, are the kids really going to see it actualized? And that's a fear I, Carrie and I know staff that I've spoken to, Carrie also, so. It's both, there's a tension there.
That's, that was just my spin of questions right, right there. Any other comments from board members?
Well, my question and comment is really.
And I know they're going to do a summary too, so.
Okay, for staff, it's not, it's not for these two individuals. I guess my question for staff, seeing that we're going, you know, we're in the middle of budget adopting, adopting a budget, I would like, and we'll be discussing this tomorrow. For our discussions tomorrow, I would like to know, you know, how are we funding these two programs and what's the recommendation of staff to continue this relationship? And if so, how are we going to fund it? So, we can talk about it tomorrow, but I just want to put that out there for tomorrow.
Yes, I think that's an important question, appropriate question. I think that after we present the tentative budget tomorrow evening, I think that staff would be prepared to respond to that.
And I don't know if this is the moment, but I do have some thoughts and suggestions to plant in the power that these minds about this. And also, I just want to share with you, people are, like staff is making an effort. So, I know Ms. Dunn is really committed to creating a coordinator position for the Health and Wellness Youth Advisory Board, and she's been writing it into grants. And there's no funds for it yet, but how can we support her in that? Are there ECL funds that could be used for the next year or two or match what she, you know, is able to drum up? So, that's one effort. As far as the gardening project goes, I think it would be amazing if we could figure out an internship for these young men to keep working with Mark. I'm just kind of setting him up for that, but they would love to keep doing that work. I think also the gardener, Ms. Leslie, has had, has barely had a contract this year, and if there was a way to actually flesh out her contract so she was taking over what I was doing and she could oversee the gardening project, which makes sense because she's the gardener, and do more gardening with them and work with other architects and the contractors, that that's a very holistic next step because it's from within and it's building off of the partnerships that are there. I think Ms. Turner would be happy to play a role in that. She just can't hold it by herself. And then, I spoke to the ED at Youth Together this morning, and my understanding from that conversation is that there is usually after the first year that a, that a school funds Youth Together, Youth Together does a lot of fundraising to be on sites kind of autonomously. And she has not been able to secure those funds for next year, but they are committed to minimally being on the campus part-time. And so, I would love us to figure out how to match, kind of they're going to figure out from general funds, if we can match that so we could have Celeste here full-time because I really don't want Emory to lose Celeste or Youth Together. But, but I also just want to really make it clear that it's not a done deal, that the way it works is that the, the school leadership really in partnership with Youth Together has to come up with this contract and agreement. And I know that there's a lot of vested interest on the board side to have Youth Together keep doing the LCAP work. So, if there's a way for all the leadership to work together to make sure Youth Together can be here next year, I think would be really valuable.
Okay, well.
Thanks for that summary.
Yeah.
I just wanted to, also she's not here, but to thank Ms. Brenda because she, we wouldn't have been able to navigate the district without her, Youth Together would not have. And at the beginning of the year, she was like, "I'm going to take you under my wing." And she introduces me to everyone, she cuts all the red tape. And so, her, she and Ms. Allen have really welcomed us into Emory. And so, I just wanted to have the time to thank her.
That's great.
Great.
So, just my final thing is I will be doing a final report, and if any of you want to stick with me as I exit to pick my brain or think thoughts, I'm totally available for that. I really feel like there's so much potential, like it's such a sweet, small district, right? Imagine can happen here. So, I'm available to have those conversations. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Cory, and thank you, Celeste. You guys have been given, provided a lot of service to our, our district and our students are far ahead because of you both. So, really appreciate everything you've done, really, truly. But before you go, I do want to ask the public, because I forget about the public. But any other, any board comments, questions? Is there any members of the public that wish to address regarding this particular item? Because I do forget, I don't want to forget. Thank you.
Thank you too.
Good evening.
Good job.
Good evening. I think the presentation was excellent. It really shows the experience you get when you, when you step up to the plate. And, you know, one of the real problems here is that nobody knows what's going on here. I mean, if you just took the video of what they're doing here and you went out in the community and you talked to people, you're going to get people that are going to be interested in participating in this. And I really want to see the district start making direct contact with businesses and people in the city so that we can exchange this information now. You know, I think one of the reasons I applied for the board is, you know, you have to start looking at the whole city now that you're doing the ECL because it's really a whole city effort. So, you want to look at the resources in the city that can contribute to doing this. So, that's one of the reasons why it's a good thing. So, I, I don't think you have to worry, we'll, we'll get you the money, you know. I mean, I represent property owners who don't know anything about what's going on here. They have never got one thing about ECL and they're paying for it, you know? That's not acceptable, and we're going to fix that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Thanks. Any other public comment? All right. Well, we are now concluded with that particular discussion action item, and as member Dwin so rightly proposed having a follow-up discussion following our meeting tomorrow, which I think is most appropriate, and thank you for bringing that suggestion out. We'll now move on to item two, 2014-15 Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Teachers.
Yes, President Dice, members of the board, this item is coming back to you for a second review and approval. Ms. Harrell, our Director of HR, is in the audience and is available to answer any questions that you may have.
This is, this is the same agenda item that we had last week, it was just in a different place and some people weren't able to pull it up on their laptops. So, we're just bringing it back this evening so that it can be in the proper agenda location.
The one I'm pulling up now on the, my iPad is still blank.
It is still. We work with Ryan.
So.
You know it wasn't up the other day though. I saw it the other day and it was not blank. It was filled in.
I was going to ask you, we, we don't have any of these? Because I didn't see any.
Ms. Tamarie worked, Marie, Ms. Tamarie worked with Mr. Choak and there, that should not be a problem.
Yeah, I think we need to give a hard copy because I have nothing here. Because I was under the assumption that we didn't have any, any needs.
Oh, I saw a filled in one. You know, that might have been in the, that might have been in the PDF that you provided. I saw it. I knew I saw it.
Here, I'll pass it to you. So, so Ms. Harrell, the needs from what I see here, a clad English learner, bilingual authorization, and well, for a Spanish teacher?
Okay, these are not needs that we know right now. These are not established needs. This form is sort of a placeholder. Should circumstances present themselves such that we need to file an emergency, request an emergency credential because someone needs a clad or for some other circumstance? That's what this is for. But our practice is not, we don't depend on this, we don't rely on this. It's just there in case.
Which is what we've done.
Mm-hmm. It's what all districts do throughout the county, throughout the state.
How many did we use last year of these?
Last year, we used one.
Just one?
Mm-hmm. We had a teacher come from out of state who needed to work on her clad.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Harrell on this particular item? I knew I saw it filled out. Look, because I'm on mute, but that's why.
That will do it. Any other questions for Ms. Harrell on this particular item? Board members feel comfortable with the information they have in front of them? I, I know I saw it in the PDF, I usually look at the PDF first all the time that Ms. Harrell sends, I mean, excuse me, Ms. Tamarie sends out, so I knew I'd seen it. You had no problem with the MacBook, so you can see it? Yeah. It's the iPad, yeah. Look, we need to go with the larger tool. But yeah, I think that was the only, I, I've seen it. You have the information in front of you. Do you have any issues with approving this evening?
Have you ever seen this?
Yes, he has.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public? All right. I had approved, I'd like to move approval of the Declaration of Need for 2014-15.
I'll second.
Any objections to that? So, with that, we are fully set for 2014-15 as regarding this declaration. Thank you, Ms. Harrell, and, and staff for bringing this back. We have iPad issues. All right. So, we'll now move on to item E, ECL Update, Various Ongoing Project Activity Status Report.
Yes, President Dice and members of the board, the purpose of the item, which we bring to you, I think every board meeting, is to update the board on the latest activities related to the ECL project. And John Baker with Swinerton is here again this evening to provide the board with a update.
Apologies, this, the laptop was turned off and it needs a user, password entry?
Do switch user, switch user.
Thank you. Can everyone see this? Okay. Thank you for asking me to do a report tonight on both the current status of the RAW, the soil mitigation work, and also the progress towards awarding the contract, the lease-lease spec agreement to Turner Construction. First, I want to give an update on the soil mitigation work. This is the remedial action work plan, the, as what's known as the RAW scope. If you haven't, if you've driven by San Pablo Avenue, you'll see there has been activity out there, although most of it is fenced off and not easy to see from the street. We are about two-thirds complete with that work. I'm going to update tonight on the, the completion of that work and also the completion of the demolition work which remains. Right now, the week of June 9th, there are four areas of soil remediation. The first is what we call the AOC6 area. This is the area where there had been testing that showed there may be methane in those areas, and also the planter area, field and parking areas. Those are the four sort of quadrants of, of the site which are having remediation work. We are just about complete with the AOC6 area. Right now, our activity is placing soil where soil has been removed. This is the area that we had had the most uncertainty about in terms of soil remediation. The testing of the areas showed that about half the area did not have any methane whatsoever, and we're able to reuse that soil on site, which will result in, in savings to the project. About one-third of it was, needed to be off-hauled, however, to a, what's called a Class II landfill, which is basically soil that can go on other projects that don't have the stringent requirements that school sites do for hazardous materials. So, that soil has, has been off-hauled. We had a small amount of soil which needed to go to a Class I landfill. This is where there is enough hazardous material that needs to go to off-hauled actually out of state. The good news, it was a much smaller area than we, than we thought we had anticipated, and so that now, that work is now complete. So, what we're doing this week and next week is placing, replacing the soil which can remain on site and also placing some import soil, soil that we're obtaining from other sites. So, that work will begin at the end of this week. The, we are sampling and profiling the soil of the planter areas this week and will off-haul any that may be required next week. In the field area, we're going to be sampling and profiling that soil next week and off-hauling any that needs to be off-hauled the week of the 23rd. At the parking lot, we're doing excavation this week. We'll sample and profile that soil next week and off-haul any soil that's needed the week of the 23rd. So, by the week, at the end of the So by the week, at the end of the week of the 23rd, we will done, would be done with all soil work at the site. And at that point, we will be able to complete demolition work of the slabs and foundations for the remainder of the project. If, if the board recalls, we did initial demolition, had to stop while we do the soil remediation work, then we can now go back and complete demolition. So that demolition work will be completed towards the end, the week of the 21st of July, that will be complete. And that will then, we'll then complete all the soil remediation work and also the demolition work on site. And at that point, we'll be able to commence with the construction of, of the project. In terms of, in terms of the work that's going, the hard work that's underway right now in order to finalize the Turner lease-lease spec agreement and put the, that contract as well as the joint operating agreement with the city of Emeryville to the board, here's an update on that process as well. If you recall at the board meeting two weeks ago, we are not able to award, or award the contract to Turner because we had not received DSA approval. DSA is the Division of State Architect and that approval we anticipate receiving by the end of this week. The plan you see before you, which has been discussed with both the city and the district, is in order to be as prudent as possible to make sure that we have certainty regarding cost and schedule for the Turner lease-lease spec agreement. And also coordinate this schedule with the completion of the raw work and demolition work. So our plan is as follows. The, once we receive the DSA-approved drawings, which we anticipate at the end of this week, those drawings will go back out to Turner subcontractors. What's, what's excellent about this process is they'll be able to go back, under the terms of the lease-lease spec agreement, and ask those subcontractors, or actually select subcontractors, to fine-tune the bids which they have, they have submitted. This should result in some savings and also added competition because we're going out to the, in each case, they're going to the lowest two subcontractors, which allows us to, you know, get some more competitive, add a little more competitive process to the finalization of the subcontractor bids. We, they've, they've asked for those subcontractor bid revisions to their numbers to be in, within two weeks, the end of the week of the 23rd, and then finalize those, those subcontractor bids the week of the 30th. Next week and also after we receive the subcontractor bids, we're gonna be working with stakeholders from the city and the district to do some scope confirmation. Right now, in the Turner's numbers, there are a number of what we call allowances. And these allowances are for things which are not yet defined. This is primarily due to the DSA, the DSA drawings which had not been approved, so there's allowances anticipating the finalization of that. So the idea is to make those allowances go away and be hard numbers. And also look at a number of other scope things which need confirmation. So we're working with, again, city and district stakeholders the week of the 16th. And then after we receive the final revised bids from the subcontractors, the first full week in July, July 7th. Also, the, in June, Swinerton will be working also with Dave Gallagher to negotiate the indirect costs in Turner's lease-lease spec agreement. What that means is there are direct costs, which is sort of hard construction, and also indirect costs, which is Turner's general requirements, general conditions and fee. And our, our goal here is to negotiate those to be, to be as cost-effective as possible, to use the bond dollars wisely and negotiate those down to a reasonable yet cost-efficient amount. And so we're working on those, Turner to do that on the 23rd. Again, this is part of the lease-lease spec type of agreement, which allows the district to negotiate those sorts of, those sorts of numbers. Following all this, in early to mid-July, we'll finalize the contract amount and also confirm the project milestone schedule with the goal of taking the contract and the JAWA back to your board the last week in July, which I believe is, would be a special meeting, although I'm not certain of that. And then also to counsel the first week in August for their review. Again, the plan has been to have board review first, board review and approval first, followed by council approval. That will allow us then to issue a notice of proceed the first week in August with the construction contract following completion of the raw soil remediation work and their completion of demolition on site. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Any questions, board members? Sounds like a lot of work.
I'm actually, I'm actually fine, but I, I guess the comment that I have is that, I guess, are we moving less dirt than we initially anticipated in the beginning?
We are removing less dirt than we anticipated.
Right.
This is always, you know, the, the scope of the raw work is estimated based on testing done on site. They do soil sample, the soils report did. So what was, the way that this work is done is that there is unit pricing obtained from the subcontract, from the contractor in terms of different types of soil and where they need to go. The worst-case scenario is that all the soil would have to be removed. And if you recall, I believe it was four weeks ago, we came to the board and approved a change order to Turner's scope of work. We discussed sort of what that worst-case scenario was. We have, I, I would say that this is, we anticipated in the amount of awarding that, that contract, what we believe we will probably have based on the soils report. The amount of, of the change order awarded was $500,000, which aligns with the budget for that work. I would say that we are better than anticipated.
Right.
Where we're able to leave more, more soil on site. In fact, that $500,000 award was based on off-hauling everything.
Right.
To a, as a Class II, Class II site. So that, assume that was kind of the mid-range scenario. We're finding that much of the soil can remain on site. And I want to point out that the testing requirements for hazardous, hazardous soil on site for school sites by the State Department of Toxic Substance Control is very stringent. That's why we can actually, most of the soil is being off-hauled to a site where it can be used in other construction projects.
Right.
Just not on school sites.
Right, right.
So for the, the area where we thought there might be methane, we're able to keep about half that soil on site. And we've not completed the sample and profiling of the smaller areas like the field, parking and, and planters, although that's less an area than the, than the AOC six area.
Right.
So it's looking like we can keep, so far so good, keep soil on site. And also this off-hauled soil, only a small amount to date has to go to that, what's called a Class I landfill where it's considered to be, have some hazardous material.
And I would say for, to have as little Class I as we do, to say that we're in Emeryville, which is really a total brown field hazardous, you know, area, just based on its history and the things that have been here, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
Not to have as much Class I.
And the original raw scope, I mean, what we had is we had, we didn't have many of the substances that occur on other Emeryville sites.
Right.
More like heavy metals.
Right.
Those tend to be to, towards the southern and western parts of town.
Okay.
And so we had things that are commonly found on construction sites, but none of the things that you might find elsewhere in the city.
Okay.
But it's, again, it's a very, it's a very stringent set of regulations that DTSC has for school sites. And it looks like we're gonna be, come out ahead of where we, where we, where we thought we would be once we awarded that, that.
That's great.
Turner's scope of that work.
That's wonderful. Great job.
Any other comments? Well, great, great work. Before I go to the public, I just wanted to note too that for those who are living in that area where the work is happening, has there been any specific communications or have there been any concerns raised or questions from members that live, you know, right there?
Yeah, the, the only incident of that we had was when we, the first week we started to work, a neighbor on, on 53rd had called the construct, the, the number on this fence for the construction foreman and was concerned about nesting geese on the field. There were geese on the, on the field. We immediately, within one day, called our biologist out from the environmental consultant who wrote a report and then filed that report, which went to, I believe, the board also. And, and that there was no nesting, no nesting activity from, from geese or other birds noted on site. And since that time, we've had no other incidents of, of any, I'm sorry, not biologist, biological issues with, with plants or animals. Also, there has been, that same firm is on call for any archaeological inspections needed and to date, we've not encountered any of those items either. In terms of neighbors though, the only neighbor discussion we had was, that was that first day. Also, I, I will, I will add, we did have one other neighbor inquiry, which is that on about two weeks ago, a mechanic had come to prepare some equipment and opened the gate. They had reported that some people were running on the field. Within 10 minutes, Turner Construction was contacted. They contacted also Emery PD. They went out there. They were within 15 minutes of being alerted by the neighbor. There was no one on the site and they locked the gate. So the response time was really quick.
Okay.
But those are the only two times that neighbors have called the district or Turner to note with any issues regarding the, the work on site.
And I'm assuming now we're being very careful when we leave the site to lock it up and make sure no one gets in.
Yes, a sternly worded notification to all of Turner's, to Turner subcontractor, all of their vendors, this is a vendor that was coming, went out there that they needed, that they actually must contact Turner to lock and unlock the gate and they are not to do so by themselves.
Well, and I'll note as a resident not too far away from that site, we've had, it's not necessarily our school site, but that whole area, there's just been so much work. PG&E, East Bay mud, there's been so much going on. I think we're almost numb to it. So, and the fact that we have a lot of raccoons and possums all over the place. And so, yeah.
Do you guys see any raccoon problems?
Yeah, we even had a wild turkey at a point. So there's just a lot going on. So I think we're, we're kind of used to it. It's just timely in that there's, this is happening right on the tail of, you know, some other project happening. So, you know, that's fortunate and not so fortunate for us residents nearby, but it is what it is. But thanks for, you know, providing that information. I was just curious what impact, if any, or questions that's, you know, been coming up. At this time, any public comments to this particular item? All right, seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Baker, for your update presentation. We'll now move on to item four, STEM Initiatives for Emory USD 2014-15.
Yes, President Dice, members of the board, it's a pleasure to bring this item to you this evening. I know from my previous tenure at the district that STEM is a major priority for the board, science, technology, engineering and math. We think that this is a very important area for the district to continue to develop for the benefit of our students. And here this evening to present information on STEM activities, some of the activities for next year, is our Dr. Carol Balfour, Science Emeritus Teacher. And she will present this item.
Thank you. I, I finally have learned how to use a Mac and now I can't remember how to use a PC. And I always used to use a mouse and this is a trackpad, so how do I get it?
It's good to see you again, Ms. Couch.
Hey, thank you. Okay, so I actually wanted to begin this presentation. It was about a month ago, I met with John Sugiyama to try to fill him in on things we've been doing in the last year. And he asked if I would present to the board tonight about initiatives that we have going, especially for, that we've been able to get some funding for. And then come August, to come back to you with a broader, what is the whole science program, K-12, as we're working on, we're getting teachers in place, et cetera. So that will be coming. So this is gonna focus on just initiatives. A little over a year ago, Anika Rida and I were fortunate to meet Dr. Stephanie Couch and I know that some of you know her. And so we have been working back and forth together for the last year to try to pull some of these initiatives together. So I'd like her to at least tell you a little bit about her role and then I will go into the slide presentation about what the actual initiatives are and what we've got going.
So just a quick background. So the Institute for STEM Education is about three years old on the Cal State East Bay campus and we were formed with the generous support of the Bear USA Foundation and Wareham Development right here in your backyard. And basically, they realized that for the good of the innovation economy that's alive and well right here in the East Bay, that we had to do something very significant in order to grow more graduates from campuses like ours who want to major in STEM. And also to diversify the student body who are entering those fields because, you know, it's, it's honestly not very diverse. And on our campus, while we have a hard time getting students from different backgrounds into those majors, even when we do with small numbers, about 40% graduate at the end of six years in STEM fields and disciplines. So they asked, can you put an institute together to like fix this problem? And I said, well, I certainly bring people together to create visions of how to fix the problem, but not just on my campus because to create STEM-interested, STEM-capable young people needs a cradle-to-career approach and it's a partnership. And so I just want to thank all of you for answering that call to partner and to figure this out together. And we've been looking really deeply at research and data to understand the most significant places at which we could intervene. And what's really exciting to me in the presentation tonight is that I see the opportunity through partnership for Emeryville to be, you know, ground zero of demonstrating for people across the state what can happen when people come together as partners and do the right, right things for our young children. And so we'll share some starting points, but I think this is going to be an iterative journey together and a recursive process where it'll be fraught with change as we figure out together what's right.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Stephanie. And yeah, I feel very fortunately that we've been able to connect with her because I think many of you know that over the years, we have had some professional development programs, some summer programs, after-school programs for science, but it was always finding a grant here, finding a grant there, and then it would go away. It wasn't sustainable. It wasn't, we weren't able to make it a part of a whole program. And I think, as Stephanie said, it's a beginning, but now we're able to start moving in that direction. So I want to share with you, and you have a written report, but this is kind of a summary in PowerPoint form. So the first initiative that I wanted to mention to you is, this is directly through Cal State East Bay, but money from Wareham. And it is for STEM PD for EOE Emory Science Teachers. And initially, we talked about making it middle school and that is gonna be what the focus is, but we've invited, we have a second and third grade teacher, we have our school change coach. We, our new science teacher whom you met tonight is going to be a part of it. All of our middle school teachers, although one of the middle school teachers, Tony Rogers, is gonna be in Nicaragua with students for one week of the summer, but he's gonna be with us for the whole rest of the year. And then, once we get high school science teacher, or we hope teachers hired, and we're almost there with the first one, we hope that person will be part and it will be through the year. So it's Emory teachers for the summer of 2014 all the way through June next year. Project Leader Coach, that is me, I'm gonna be working part-time for the district through CSU East Bay. We also have a couple of faculty that I've been getting to know. Michelle Corb and Julia Olken. One is a math faculty member, Julia is, and Michelle is in science education. And then some administrative support, so they're funneling the money to us. So the total grant from Wareham is $67,570, of which $42,570 is coming directly to Emeryville and will go to pay for the Emory teachers and for the work that I'll be doing. Yes, yes, yes.
So to add to that, actually, in my past life, I've done a lot of work in technology and teaching and learning and half of the funding has come from an organization called SNC that supplies the network services to the K-20 education community. And their one requirement for the matching funds to Wareham is that in the model we build, we take the work that we do together and put resources into. build, we take the work that we do together and put resources into some sort of an online situation that has a collaborative tool, so other teachers in other schools in our region can collaborate with our teachers to understand what we do here and can learn from it, plus add to it. So, but we don't want to start there until we really get ourselves together and off the ground, but, so we have broader vision.
Right. And I think the person, that Jatine is one of the, yeah, so you're going to hear about the person who's going to be helping us with it in our next project. But I want to tell you just a little bit more detail about what this year-long project is about. There will be one week in, at Cal State East Bay that the teachers will participate as part of a bigger project, which is IMSS, which is Integrated Middle School, Middle School Science, yeah, Integrated Middle School Science. That is an NSF-funded partnership between ACOE and CSU East Bay. And they have been developing approaches with middle school teachers with eight different school districts. We haven't been part of that, but they have been working toward, moving toward the next generation science standards. And one of the things I'll be bringing to you in August is the beginning of some understanding of what NGSS is really all about. And so, this will be the introduction for our science teachers to understand what that's about, because they've been hearing Common Core, Common Core, Common Core. You've all been hearing Common Core. We've heard the initials NGSS, and yet when you look at the LCAP, it's supposed to be starting with that. So, we're going to start with helping them to understand. And then, there will be three days in September where we will work with them and we will have the two faculty from Cal State East Bay and myself will work with these teachers to plan for the year how they can start to bring in some of the principles of NGSS without doing a wholesale shift. But how can they start to build it into their practice? Then there will be monthly meetings of, that will be after school and paid for, or possibly Saturdays, where there will be two kinds of things that will, well, three things. Some will be ongoing planning for their daily classroom work. But also, we have built in a career day for students and some field trips, and this is for middle school students. Last year, and I guess it's been for several years, there has been a career day, a CTE-focused career day for high school students in Emory. I went to it last year. We had 20 students there last year. It was, and it was at Wareham, one of Wareham's buildings here in Emeryville, but districts from all over. We want to do the same kind of thing, but for middle school students to start raising that awareness earlier. So, that will be part of the coaching and training and planning we do. And then, our longer-term goal, which we'll be focusing on in the second semester with our teachers, is to plan a STEM summer for next year, which we will go back to our old STEM Academy, but it won't be the old STEM Academy. It will be focusing on the next generation science standards. It will be bringing in Cal State East Bay students. We don't have the full plan, but, and it will include more professional development for the teachers. So, that will be a little bit like the model we used to run for summer schools, when we'd have a couple of weeks of PD for our teachers and then do the embedded summer school work. And Kristin, you were part of one of those. That's how we met many years ago. So, it's coming back to that, but having these partnerships and trying to make it more sustainable. So, that's that first grant. The next one is one where even though we don't have our full STEM Academy this summer, we're going to have an app camp, four weeks, for students. And in fact, the computer programming teacher who's going to be teaching that is Jatine Bachta, who has his own company called Ninja Pandas and develops apps, mainly games, for students. And what he's going to be doing, and he has done this with other students, so he has experience with teaching. He and his wife is actually a professor at Cal State East Bay. Together, they will be teaching our students how to program computers, how to do the programming to create their own app. And just yesterday, I was going through with him what the plan is for that. But in addition to that, we will have two teachers. Originally, he wanted to have it for 15 kids, and both Rich Robbins and I felt that we wanted more kids than that. So, we're aiming for 30 students. And what we'll be doing is, we'll have two teachers, it's actually three in a, because two of them are going to, one of them is going to, two of them are going to split the summer. Laura Turner, whom you know is going to be one of the teachers, she immediately jumped at the opportunity, because she got her master's, I don't know if you realize it, in education, with an emphasis on technology and using technology in the classroom. So, she jumped at the chance to be able to learn how to do this, because we want to be able to transfer it into the classroom. So, she will be doing it. Regina, our new science teacher, except for the one week when she's going to be with us at Cal State East Bay. So, Karen Sukeneck, who's our special ed teacher, is going to share the job with her, and so she will be getting the skills. And what they'll do is, they'll work with 15 of the kids in the classroom, in the computer lab, with the computer teachers and one of the teachers, while the other kids are in the Science Center doing related projects and doing a project connected to their app. Learning, and it will be customized to what the students need in ELA Math Science. We're going to be working on that. We've got some planning time. So, that is for this summer, and it's four weeks, and 30 kids, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, rising sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. These other two initiatives are professional development, and again, we wouldn't have known about them without Stephanie's passing the word on to us and saying, hey, this would be a good opportunity. So, Alameda County Office of Education has been connecting with UC Davis, which has training for, they call it CSTEM. And it's actually, they've been developing the programming language, C and C+ for teaching students in schools, and they've got several levels of it. And they've developed a program. There's a professor up there, his last name is Cheng, and I've forgotten his first name. Anyway, he actually teaches this program. And what they have is, they have developed a curriculum for teaching algebra and algebra concepts through teaching computer programming, because if you can program the algorithm, you have to understand the concept, and you can teach all of algebra that way. They also have a robotics program. So, through, Alvin Burns and I participated in April for one day during spring break. And then, because we did that, we were offered the opportunity to do a three-day more in-depth training. So, we're going to do that training in two weeks. And as a result of that, ACOE is donating a class set of robots, and these are iBots that Professor Cheng has researched and says are far better than the Lego robots. They're more sturdy and more flexible and all kinds of things. We're getting a class set of those. We're getting a class set of the text for learning math concepts, and I think I left off that we're also getting a class set of the computer books. And then, we also are being offered discounted prices if we wanted, say, a second set of anything. We're also getting the software licenses, and I'm going to be working with Ryan before he leaves to get all that put in place. So, the goal with that is to incorporate computer programming into our curriculum in a number of places. Alvin already teaches computer programming. We're hoping we can put the ninth grade science class in, and we want to incorporate that into that, and then possibly talk with our math teachers about moving. So, that is a professional development and building the platform for improving curriculum, more electives, et cetera. And then, the last one is one that I actually am participating in this week. I was down in San Jose all day today, will be tomorrow and the next day. And again, through Stephanie, was asked if I would participate in Engineering as Elementary. This is a program that has been in development by the Massachusetts Science Museum. There's a high school version called Engineering: The Future, and it's kind of a spin-off of that, but as I'm looking at it, learned today, it's not quite the same. But it's an opportunity to look at the program, and there is the possibility, if the program looks good, of being partnering with some projects where they're going to be looking for some funding. So, it's, again, an opportunity, because one of the pieces of the next generation science standards is that engineering practices are interwoven with science practices. And so, we're going to have to be incorporating those kinds of ideas, K-12, into our science. So, and my last side is special thanks to Stephanie, because without, without her help, and I feel as if we're building a really nice team and collaboration. So, that's my presentation.
I'm excited. Questions for Dr. Balf or Dr. Couch?
I don't have a question. I just am blown away and impressed by your continued efforts at this, and this is, I'm so excited to go see this in action. I can't even tell you how impressed I am by all of this. Thank you.
Well, you're welcome to come.
The pressure's on, Carol.
Yeah. There is, there is one side note related to the previous presentations, another area where we really need to get some funding. We've run out of money for Leslie Uchea, our gardener, and that's my next effort, and I know that Rich Robbins is somewhat interested in gardening, so. But, but also, all the stuff that the kids who were presenting about that, first of all, they're all in the app camp, except Strickland, who has to go to Jamaica for the summer. But the incorporating of science and the gardening, I mean, that's one of the reasons why I, it's not just, just a gardening program, although that by itself is justification enough, but it integrates with so many other things.
If I can just add, so, again, before coming here, we were trying to get a statewide STEM network off the ground. We're now working here in this, I'm here in this region, and there's a statewide effort. And what's so special about here is that it's such a STEM-rich environment. And as I talk to the business community, they are so eager to plug in, but they don't quite know what to do, and there seems to be this language gap between education and business. It's just so hard to even have the conversations, right? And so, you know, again, these are starting places, but there's so many people out there who want to help you and work with you. So, I hope as we grow this plan and with your superintendents, as we understand what the priorities are, to help do even more.
Right. Well, you know, I'm just, I'm blown away, but I'm sitting here just thinking, you know, one of our models is that partners powering student success. And this is what this is all about, you know, getting with partners, you know, for the good of our students to, you know, for their success. And, I mean, Stephanie, I just applaud that, you know, you're here, you're willing to work with us, you know, Carol, you know, great job, you know, continue working in the partnership. And, you know, for me, just keep bringing, just keep bringing back results, you know. So, you know, great job, great presentation.
Well, before you go, any public comment? You know, that's my normal. I can't, I have it like tattooed somewhere. Any public comment to this particular item? Thank you, thank you so much. Look forward to the report in August. Thank you, thank you so much.
Keep up the good work.
President, I say members of the board, I think with, I am equally, to use Board Member Duane's phrase, blown away, but I, I, I've, you know, been around for a while and have lived through a number of efforts to really kind of get STEM going in school districts. And I think that what I'm really impressed with is the emphasis on the professional development piece, because in my past history, one of the reasons why STEM really never took off in terms of the vision is that the professional development piece really wasn't emphasized. And, you know, traditionally, science is an area that oftentimes multiple subject credential teachers are not, an area that they're most comfortable with in terms of their own preparation. So, I think that the emphasis on professional development is really going to make a major difference for our students, because our teachers are going to be much more comfortable and confident about the ability to facilitate student learning in this area. So, I want to thank Dr. Balf and Dr. Couch for getting together and presenting this very exciting, and I think it's just terrific opportunity for our teachers and students in the future.
So, just because you said that, it reminded me of a comment that I did have and I forgot to make, of course. But I just wanted to say, there, it was probably about two years ago, I've been on this board for a minute, so it takes a minute to remember which meeting it was, but I recall a conversation, it was a retreat, I think, we had, and there were teachers present and speaking to some of the initiatives that we've had, all these different things, they're called this, and, you know, nothing really sticks. But I do appreciate the thoughtful, you know, the, you can see it, you can see what's happening, and the fact that you're including teachers that are not science-only. I think that's the most valuable component that I've, you know, I really resonated with, because I don't want to see those same teachers coming back saying, well, I didn't know anything about it. But I mean, that's where it was really great and valuable to see that effort and that it is, it's a more inclusive, transparent process than what we've probably been doing in a long time, just because we're just trying to get it done. And, you know, in terms of capacity, that's a huge bandwidth and capacity, that's a huge component with such a tiny district. So, I thought that was really great, and the fact that we do have partners in town that are willing to not only talk about it, but to actually follow through on it speaks a lot to, you know, what partnership means for businesses in town. And so, we, similarly, we want to make sure we communicate with all of our partners, all of our potential partners and residents as well. But I really wanted to appreciate, you know, that effort to make it, you know, as cohesive as possible and definitely make it very clear about the path and steps, so I appreciate that.
I have one comment. I forgot to mention this, and it's really an ask. Carol, Dr. Balf, when you come back in August, when Mr. Robbins was here at City Schools, he had, he had mentioned that his commitment to also funding some activities for after school. So, if, in your August presentation, if you can also update us on that piece, it would be very helpful as well, and appreciative, okay? Thank you.
Thanks, like, thank you. Thank you for sparking something there. All right. I'm like, oh, yeah. All right, well, now on to board reports and announcements. Item J, any board reports, announcements? Board, it's been a busy week.
It's been busy.
Yeah. Please.
I would like to report that I personally dropped off a large donation of books, probably a couple hundred books to Annie Eats yesterday. Got a good sweat in as I loaded and unloaded 200 or so books at Annie Eats. So, the teachers will go through them first, and anything the teachers don't use, they give to the children.
That's great.
That was on behalf of Head Over Heels, which was on behalf of Scholastic, so we're just kind of passing it along. This is the third year we've been able to do this.
That's great, partner.
Yep.
That's great. Any other board reports, announcements? All right, so on to item K, calendar review?
Yes, President, I say members of the board, the calendar is getting shorter as we reach the end of the school year this Thursday, tomorrow for students, and Friday for the teaching staff. Just a reminder, we do have a study session tomorrow evening, a special board meeting. The two items that will be, the focus of tomorrow night is the next draft of the LCAP, and there will be a public hearing preceding that. Following that, or I guess I have the order reversed, I guess first we'll be sharing information regarding the tentative budget before the board. And so, Mr. Benet will be presenting that. And we're not scheduled, of course, for budget adoption until the June 25th meeting, but the goal for tomorrow night will be to try to respond to and answer as many of the board's questions as possible, so that if there are any adjustments to be made to the budget, they could be made before that budget is brought back to you on June 25th for adoption. There will be a finance committee June 18th. That would be next Wednesday. And just planning ahead on your calendar, on July 10th is the new date for this quarterly City Schools meeting. And also, if- And also, if a board member is available, so tomorrow, we are having the, an end-of-the-year barbecue for employees. Originally, our plan was to invite the entire community. And the focus of this really was to introduce Dr. Rubio, who stepped out for a moment, but introduce him to the, to the community, not just employees, but the community as well. And after staff reviewed this, we thought it would be more appropriate, rather than end-of-the-year barbecue, to find another type of event so that Dr. Rubio can be appropriately introduced to the community. And so I think staff is committed to identify that event for either late August or early fall. But this, it's been a long year for the staff, the employees. And so we're looking forward to seeing as many of the folks before they leave for summer, particularly the teaching staff. And that will give the employees opportunity to informally talk with Dr. Rubio as well. It is from 3:30 to 5:00 PM tomorrow. And so you don't have to eat dinner. Before you come to the study session, please come to the barbecue. It's going to be here at Ralph Hawley. And in the transition between 5:00 and 6:00, when we get around to cleaning up, we'll be ready to start the special board meeting at 6:00 tomorrow evening. So we hope to see all of you at the barbecue.
All right. Well, at this time, the board will move into closed session and will be followed with a report out after that. So we'll just now recess to closed session.